... Thank goodness. Man on the wish and Jenny. Until Jake gets here next week, because I didn't get hold of sheriff, but he really should weigh in like you.
I agree.
Yeah, I still don't have pictures for him, so.
Yeah, I sent this out, I don't know if I got any. Because I sent all of our, all of our people to give you the pictures. What we all have. The, uh, survey. Maybe there's a perfect on the paper.
Hey, are you available? Well, come on, I'll change mine, appreciate it. Oh, boy. Oh, thank you. Not much. There's a back row.
He said next to me. They did? Are you saying that?
Now, no.
I don't have it.
We're not, we tabled our, uh, illicit Jenny.
Perfect.
Item to wait for the sheriff to be able to weigh in on that.
Review.
So, we are looking at the health department building, or still talking about the feasibility of whether to proceed with that. Mike, our building maintenance man, has looked at that building and we know we've got a lot of, lot of issues over there, so we're thinking that would probably be better to build if we can build within our budget. That would be the sales tax money, nothing on the property taxes, no property tax increases if we go down this route, but right now, I think what would make more sense would be if we, you know, engineer, architecture, firstly, enlighten me. I don't know why we would need engineering, why we wouldn't just.
It should be both into one. Because for structural engineers, what you need.
What, Mike?
Structural engineer for the, for the plans. I think they're both considered as the same, you know.
What do you all think about having, uh, plans drawn up? I mean, we're not agreeing on what we're looking here, but as a first step.
Is there gonna be enough room on the west side of that, on that corner property, to do something there, or, I don't know, does it have? Just throwing this out there. Does it have to be in Columbus? I'm just thinking properties.
Here's the problem, okay?
It's the address.
It's the address. I will stand like a protester on that front door, holding on to that thing, because the contracts for federal and state, you have to change a million different things on some of that stuff whenever you have contracts, and it has to stay at that same address. Otherwise, you have to go through on a lot of those things, an entire application process, Medicare, Medicaid, insurance, everything.
This is not like we would change a business address or whatever, I mean, she's talking about some very, very complicated.
It's my building's really nice mailbox, that.
That's what I'm saying, that front door needs to like just stay right there for just, you know, like.
We'll just make you a nice brick mailbox.
Yeah, right there.
What, what do you have in mind, what do you think?
I, I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box.
Yeah.
If the property wasn't big enough, is what I'm thinking.
I think the property would be big enough, especially if we went to the east and utilized that.
Property's big enough, I measure.
Yeah, and I mean, we even have like the back part where the, the back parking lot is, so I mean, if we went and took the back part, if we went to the south and to the east, that entire area would be big enough for our building. Um, and still continue to use the parking in the front for the patrons, and then the parking on the parking lot for us, for the staff.
But the mailbox out there.
But the mailbox has gotta been, be at 110.
Well, I saw, I mean, there may be, back to the beginning, someplace may have an existing building that would work, when I was saying, I'm just thinking.
Existing building?
Yeah.
Well, you've got land across the street here, I don't know if the square footage is there, but that gets into a nightmare of crying pardon.
The old dollar store?
Yeah, gets into a nightmare of.
I think somebody else is already working in the process of looking at that one.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, I know, that's why we're here, just throw out all kinds.
Which I don't, it doesn't matter to me, if we can find a building that works, I absolutely.
Just leave the mailbox where it's at.
No objections, but I'm just saying. We have been told that that is an absolute nightmare, and a lot of those contracts, like I had spoke about before, whoever writes those contracts, whoever they are, some of that stuff cannot be changed. Um, you cannot change it from the person who wrote it to the new person in charge. You can make additions to it, um, and make some, some different clarifications, but you can never take it out of that person's name. We were baffled by that, we had no idea, and when we said, what if that person is no longer living, and they said Quebec, you cannot change that.
You have different administrative.
Right. It is incredible when you look into some of that paperwork.
This plan that you roughly drew up and did a fantastic job, it's pretty much the same square footage if you exclude the Sally Court. So, but would you spend a couple of minutes just explaining how many employees you have, what they do, how many spaces, how these rooms would be utilized, and
You bet.
Why this plan?
So, just to give you guys an example of, of some of this to kind of explain, so the current building that we have right now is three levels. Most people do not realize that it is three levels. Now, that third level on the bottom is only half-used, so only one side of it is used, because it's built into the hillside. So, only a small portion of that is what is actually used. It is where we house like our heating and, um, heating units, and we have a little bit of storage, we have a bathroom down there, and then we have another like maintenance area, and then a little like kitchenette area as well. Um, there's a huge staircase that goes up upstairs, that takes you up to the middle floor, and then up to the upper floor. It is not really ADA accessible in some areas, so there is absolutely no way for, um, one of our staff to get to those other areas below or up above, and it is a lot of unused space. That staircase, believe it or not, could be almost three exam rooms or three bathrooms, I mean, if you consider that space that that, that that's built under. When you look at the layout of the building, and when it was built, it, it was phenomenal, I mean, for the times, it was a great building. The problem is now, is like when you have a waiting room, we are kind of limited in what, um, services that we can offer, because the bathroom that the public uses has two stalls in it with no divider, so there's two toilets with no divider, because we had to take the divider out to make it ADA accessible. So, when we did that, you can't do certain lab tests, like we can't even do drug screenings, because you can't really secure that area, because there's two toilets, a sink, and everything there, and then the person has to come through the lobby in front of everyone with their lab specimen to go clear back into the lab room. The lab room that we use has no sink to wash your hands. So, in order to do that, you know, you have to hand sanitize until you can get around the corner to where the ba, uh, to where the. There is also no hot water to those areas, there are a couple areas that there is no hot water. Now, with that said, we've looked at it a million times about trying to get that hot water to go. In some areas, you can get the hot water, when, but I am not exaggerating when I say you have to let it run fifteen minutes in order to get warm water. And that is, I'm not dismissing that, it is literally that long, because of the way that the pipes go to get up there to be able to get warm water. Even to do dishes in our little kitchenette, there's no warm water to be able to do that, there is none at all. And so, those are kind of some of the problems that we have with that building. Then we have the flooding issue, so, you know, the way that it's built on that wall, it is separating, I'm just gonna just say how it is, so everybody is clear and understands, okay? Because I don't think everybody knows.
I'm glad you are, because we took the tour, but the general population doesn't know, we're not looking at a building because we want dates, cosmetic things, this is a, these are structural issues that we're dealing with.
So, the outside wall to the west side of the health department is built on this slant, on this slant. And so, the parking lot slants over to here. There is a wall, a retaining wall, that's like a concrete wall, okay? On top of the concrete wall is a brick wall that adjoins to that, however, with settling and different structural problems, it is starting to bend and crack. It has cracked the entire length of the building, and on the inside, the concrete that is the quote-unquote sheet rock, so to speak, has come off of the walls and is literally falling on the floor. When it does that, and it rains, it literally rains it so hard when we have heavy rains, that we spend the entire next two days mopping the floor. You cannot see it on a floor like this. So, when you go to mop it, you can't see that there is a huge wet spot, and as you mop it, it, the water goes under the tiles like this, I have no idea what kind of industrial tiles these are, but they're phenomenal, because the glue keeps them stuck down like normal like this, but every time it rains, it lifts the tiles up, they sweat all the way around all the corners. You mop it, and as you wait, it comes back up. And you mop it, and it comes back up, and we do this all day, and we have had drain snakes that, you know, you lay around for like flooding, those are permanent fixtures there, we, we buy them by the cases to keep there, to keep the water from flooding. Now, that's just that floor, that's not including, um, the mold and the things that are on the bottom floor that's come up from the years of that leaking coming in. So, there is considerable mold downstairs, um, that is also in condition, uh, that we're concerned about as well, uh, because that's where our heating and air units are, and so, um, that provides for a lot of concern as well. Not to mention some of the electrical, um, components that are down there that are, are exposed. I'll just say it outright, there is wiring down there that is open. I don't know why, I, I was not there whenever somebody decided to do the wiring, and it's the wiring to our heating units. There are drains, PVC pipe drains, that's for the overflow for the heating, and I, I have pictures and I have videos, um, just because I kept it whenever we were having a lot of the drainage, but it runs on the floor, snakes around, and then comes back to a drain in the middle of the floor, in the concrete floor. Then we have these incredible tunnels that we absolutely don't even know what they are, they're just like some big round open tunnels that are open that go underground into the side of the parking lot. We don't even know what that is. So, with that said, um, those are just some of the issues. We did notice in the last two months that not only do we have the, um, the crack along the east wall, but the north wall has also cracked. It has cracked entirely along the bottom floor, all the way across, the whole entire building. Then about a month ago, our downstairs area, we have doors like this, that lock. We went to open them one day and unlock them, because they're locked, it's things that we keep in there, and we went to unlock them and open them, and it was stuck. We finally got it open, and when we got it open, we went to shut it back, and we realized that the floor had shifted down, and now the, um, latch does not fit to the latch plate. It is off by at least a half of an inch, so it has shifted by at least a half of an inch, the building has, and the door jams. So, that's part of that. So, just looking at this, one of the things that we wanted to do is we really don't have good exam rooms. So, we can't even do some of the services that we would like to do, because the two exam rooms that we had are very small, and they're also right in front of a window. We have curtains up there, but that also does not provide for proper confidentiality if you're doing certain procedures as well. So, we can't do anything like any kind of women's health or anything like that, because of those areas that's in there as well. So, with that said, um, we have looked at the different areas that we have, and, you know, WIC is one of our main, uh, grants that we have, and so, looking at that to, to be able to provide an area for the kids to be where, um, the WIC RD is, the WIC nurse and the WIC clerk are, they can keep all those children together where they're all together and they're not running, that was one idea that we had down here on this end as well. Uh, how it is now, when you come in for WIC, you go completely all the way across the health department and all the way back, and if you want to leave your kids out in the, um, out in the conference room, they're out there. If we have any kind of trainings, we have to do them out there while we're having WIC clinics as well. Um, when people come in, you know, there's no way to like, kind of like separate them as well, so that's why we had like the specific waiting area, and then we had different exam rooms and, um, different areas like the lab that was near the public restroom, so that we could do things like, um, urine tests, you know, for like drug testing and stuff. Not necessarily just for like, you know, illicit or anything, but like for KOD or things like that, employees that we wanted to. Right, anything like that that we wanted to do, and so, the departments have taken that on, and that is actually a great service that they provide, that they actually bring in, um, some extra funding for. And so, we have worked very hard this last year to bring on new services, but with the space that we have, and not necessarily the amount of space, the layout of the space, we're very limited as to what we can do. And we also have the hazard of the heating and air unit, as we've talked about before. Um, when they were working on the wall, and they were trying to fix the leak that was coming into the wall, Rod and Bridge came over, a few of the guys, and they were putting caulking along there to try to help keep that water from running in, because we assumed that that's where it was running in from, we're not exactly sure. And as they were sitting there, the, um, the electrical on two of the units shocked them. So, they sat down and they were on the floor, and they put one hand on the, um, the heating and air unit, one hand on the wall near the conduit, and it bit them. Now, it didn't hurt them, but it could have probably. Um, we have one unit that, we have five units, as you know, two units have went bad, um, in the last month, unfortunately. At least they died though at the end of summer, not the beginning of summer. However, one component that is really, really, um, scary is that the conduit hooks on the outside of the wall, and it, there's a, um, a clamp there where the conduit hooks into that has all the wiring that comes from the units. Now, some point in time, I have no idea why, when, how, whom, what, nothing, that is pulled loose. The wires are exposed inside of there, and the conduit is just flopping, it's not hooked back on. At some point, somebody tried to fix it with duct tape, that was not me, I've not touched it. Somebody tried to put duct tape on it, and it is again separated. Somebody also tried to fix it with a sump pump, and put the sump pump in there, and has ran an extension cord from downstairs in the basement to the outside area, to try and help pump out some of that area that's in there.
I want to clarify that some of these repairs, this was all before Mr. Mike's time here.
Yes.
Mike has tried to clean up some of this stuff, but.
So, all of these things have happened before, both years, this is actually. So, it's not like a new thing that's happened, these have been, these have been there for years. So, these are just some of the issues, and so, we did have someone come out to look at the air conditioner, we've had three different people come out and look at the air conditioner, and all three of them just picked up their boxes and left. No one really wants to touch it, because it's not fixable. Because it has a huge leak in the, um, the freon, and in order to fix it, they could fix it, and granted, we hope that it, you know, being the first day of fall starts to go off a little bit, and then we don't have to worry about putting that expensive freon in, and just deal with it next spring, when we get ready to get started.
I think we've learned enough that we know this is not, again, a cosmetic deal by any means, it's structural, and a new building would improve the functional abilities to, uh, not just today's use, but maybe in the future use, so. What do you all think about?
And finding a different building might be, an existing building might be an option, because you can have the expensive demo, stuff like that.
That's what I was thinking, but we just have to see what's up to it, but she's gotta have a mailbox.
That's right.
A good one. But honestly, if we could do that, if we could sell that property, put a mailbox there, so you still keep that address.
It has to be a physical location, that's the problem on the application, so it asks for a physical location and the mailing location, and so, both of those are identified for that, for those government contracts. So, we have a PO box that is our mailing, but the physical address is where, when you build services, that physical address is where it's billed to. That's the clinic, because some places may have a PO box, say like some of our other clinics, they may have clinics everywhere, but the main address where they want things billed into is a PO box, but they may have a clinic in Baxter, Galena, Columbus, Bratnack, you know, everywhere, but it gets, you know, that mail goes into there, but that physical address for that contract goes with that address.
Peyton, besides that being very labor-intensive to make those changes, I get that it's very, very labor-intensive, but you anticipate if we, if we hired an employee that did nothing but that, you anticipate us having to stop any services during the interim of that paperwork transition?
Most certainly.
What?
I most certainly believe that you would.
What, if it was in particular with him?
You cannot build for some of those things until you've been approved for that, so if you're no longer operating at this, and you can't submit it yet until you have a whole nother place, it's subjected and it's ready to go, plus you have to have all of your inspections for like CLIA and different things like that for the lab. So, when you have those, everything has to be set up, so I mean, it is a transition, but yes, there would be some that would be stopped at that time.
If they built on that, that is just a question, where would you guys go while they were doing that?
We'd have to have, we'd have to have like that, while they were still building it. So, that address would still be there, and that would still be our physical location for that. I mean, there's just a lot of things to think about, I'm not disregarding any of them.
Do you have any ideas of buildings that are available?
Even if we build to the west.
Pardon?
If we build that building next door to the west, that would mean that it would've been addressed.
Yeah, because there's actually three, three addresses there, three properties.
Yes.
Yeah, we build a new building, you're still getting new addresses.
Well, none if you keep, if you keep, that's why I keep laughing about this and joking about.
Consolidate all new properties right there.
Right, and if you keep the front door still at 110, it's still 110. You can build on 108, 106, 104, 102, you know, which way.
I don't know, the post officers, they have their rules too.
So, I mean, it depends on where that front door enters, is my understanding, so if that front door enters at 110, that's still your address. Doesn't matter if the building extends on over, clear down to whatever number, that's not the address.
You build this new building to the west, you can tear that old building down, you've lost your address.
That's why I keep saying, you gotta keep that front door, we have, have the intention that that's where it's going to be.
I know, but I mean, when you get this new building built, you're gonna tear the old building down.
And build right back in that same area, and that's why I laugh, because I say, the front door has to be built on the same spot as to where you're going to do that.
Where the building's at, is that not in a flooding kind of zone?
Not that I know of. The only thing that's a problem is that hard ground law, we don't know about that, it kinda, you know, comes down, and the whole back, if you've ever walked on the back of it, it's just, uh, steps of concrete that goes up that are huge steps, they're not even like little steps. They're, you know, steps that are about this tall.
I think that may be, you talked about the, the tunnels, I think that may have been the pit under the, under the press, when that was a newspaper office, that you went down into on big steps, you went down into the pit and changed the paper.
These are the steps on the outside, big steps on.
Oh, I'm talking about the inside, but, well, it might be on the outside now, because the building was torn down. Anyhow, just a suggestion.
Do you guys have any? I think it would be about any available buildings that.
I don't know, I need to think about that.
Check them out?
You got anybody that can draw something up, or is there anybody local, or?
A fellow I know in Joppin', he's an engineer driving.
Can we get maybe just a rough idea of what it's gonna cost to do that?
I can talk to him.
Maybe we have a couple.
Are you talking metal building or just a regular structure?
Metal's gonna be cheaper.
I'd build metal, yeah.
And you always put a little brick fixture or something later on to dress it up.
It's like hospital built down there for.
Physical therapy, yeah.
Physical therapy.
Well, all we're doing is trying to get ideas, so this is all to get more information, so.
Who built theirs, do we know? Do you know who built the physical therapy building?
Yeah, that Becky McDaniel does it, built that, yeah, but, you know, you have to put out the bids anyway.
Right, right, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I'd say, I'd say we'd get, get the price, what it's gonna cost to get this screwed up on an actual print. Meanwhile, you can think, I can think, whoever, if there is an available building that we could use and repurpose and compare causes to each other.
You also need to get a lead test done if you're gonna build on that property west of there. I, I'm just absolutely sure that that's got some lead underneath it.
That that's what?
Has lead in the ground underneath that table.
It used to be an old gas station.
Well, before the gas station did it, it was a newspaper office, and there was lead, I, I shoveled lead out from underneath that place by the shovel pool.
She was so.
I got it all.
It's everywhere.
Yeah.
That's the EPA calling right now.
I'm sure they can help me out, they talk to me every week.
Well, I'm only saying, I'm only suggesting that when you're using it for health purposes, you don't want it to have something that's gonna create more another problem.
Wish that is something that we have looked into, because of my understanding that under the west side of that parking lot, there was a previous gas station. So, I had started the, the process of trying to find out, are the tanks still there?
I don't think so.
So, that was, but that's one of the things that you have to find out before you can build on that.
But I'm talking about prior to that.
Right.
Prior to that, we, we had. Is there any grants by?
There's USDA money that I, I'm pretty sure.
Only thing for now, has been I'll come up with is pretty much gonna be a low interest loan.
Yeah.
You can, you can do a CDVG community facilities, yeah.
It does not qualify.
It doesn't qualify?
No. We already looked into that, that was the first one we looked into.
I'm surprised it doesn't qualify.
There are certain stipulations on some of that, so, there's a million hoops too, but I'm not opposed to doing those. That was my first one that I looked at.
I'd reach out to Patterson Foundation.
We just talked to them on Friday.
Yeah, they're funny there for healthcare.
So, we have a plan, right?
That sounds a good place.
Um, Mike's gonna check in to getting some ways, we're gonna look at, see if there's any buildings available. Anything else? Well, take it up again next week, we're getting, we're just trying to gather as much information and pick a path. Be very informed, so.
And that, that is, um, definitely something that I would definitely like to have, I would like for somebody to come out and even look at the property to even see if it's even a possibility with, you know, what's there, and i- is it feasible to build there again? I mean, if it's not feasible to build there again, or we have to start all over, I know, if we have to start all over again, then what am I looking at down the road to get all this stuff taken care of? That, that's my question. So, I mean, if it's not feasible to build there, and we do have to change all the contracts, and we do have to go through all those, those hoops, it's fine, I just need to know ahead of time what all I need to do, because I don't want to have any interruption in services, especially since we have taken on a few new services recently.
And that's what we hired you to do, and you've done a wonderful, no, we hired you just to be our director, but you've added a lot of services, because that's what the public was asking for, so, thank you for that. We'll regroup again next week and see what information we have, and it may just have us looking for even more information, it should. Mike, thank you, the businessman in this courthouse.
That was my response.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton.
Thanks.
I want to ask one, is there anything else that you can think of? Robert, I saw you at the fair, because you were at the pie auction, but were you the one that bought, um, an animal for Clearway?
Uh, yeah.
I got a call a few days ago, you guys had paid?
It's paid. No, it's paid.
When was it paid?
Uh, Friday, by credit card.
I was holding up a lot of kids'.
Yeah, I know, but we received, so, the problem with that is I received the invoice on September 2nd, and I submitted it on. and I submitted it on September 2nd, and it was printed on the 25th of August. So, I didn't get the invoice till the 2nd of September, and that's when I submitted it. And then they have to submit that to their finance department.
Main thing, it's paid, so those...
It is paid, they paid it by credit card, and then the check was in the mail, and they just told them to keep the check too, so, they paid $4,000 for a pair of rabbits, but that's okay.
Awesome.
I paid more than for a pie.
Yeah, I can make them pretty cheap, watch you for that.
And then he gave it away.
He gave it away.
I'm gonna ask for a 15-minute executive session on the happy personnel. And through our 10:05.